I will call the weekly meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Roll call please.
Paul?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Chalka?
Here. We will have a moment of silence to reflect our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hi, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as opposed or amended. Who?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Public comments, do we have any members of the public who would like to comment? If so, please approach the podium and give your name and address. Do we have any members of the public on Zoom that would like to provide a comment? Alright, proclamation, we have a proclamation to read.
Great. So, um, I'm just gonna give a brief introduction for this Juneteenth proclamation. My name is Annete Zemeyer, Human Resources Director, and we have several committee members here from our newest committee that was developed with approval of the Board of Supervisors to focus on representing the needs of a diverse workforce in our communities while eliminating barriers to overcoming inequities and intentionally creating a space for individuals to feel welcomed and valued in Black Hawk County. And with that, last meeting we had was on Wednesday, and we developed this proclamation to honor that first Juneteenth holiday that we're recognizing as a county and really the first Juneteenth proclamation that I believe the Board of Supervisors has an opportunity to hear and approve. So, I'm gonna introduce members of the committee that are gonna present this today. We aren't gonna let Jen or have Jen read that. Normally Grant reads all of our proclamations, our auditor, but we actually did a practice round during our last meeting, and it worked really well to have each committee member got to read a portion of the proclamation. So, with that, presenting today is gonna be Liz Baron, Detention Officer. We've got Elena Chenwick, Office Specialist, Michelle Clark, Office Specialist, Anna Knapp, HR Generalist, Claudia Robinson, Clinical Services Supervisor, Lisa Sesterhahn, Public Health Planner, and our County Recorder Sandy Smith. So, I'll let them come line up and we'll start reading their proclamation.
Whereas the United States of America is made up of people from all over the world who are declared equal not only in freedom but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy civilization. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Book Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, providing that all persons held as slaves in areas in rebellion against the United States are and henceforth shall be free, paving the way for the passage of the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, which completely abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, nearly two and a half years later, Major General Jordan Geringer and Union Army troops enforced the Emancipation Proclamation and freed the last enslaved Black Americans in the Confederacy. And whereas the holiday June 19th combines the words June and 19th and has been celebrated by Black Americans for over 150 years.
Whereas on January 1st, 1980, Juneteenth became an official Texas holiday. And whereas on April 2nd, 2002, Juneteenth became the state holiday in Iowa to be celebrated annually. And whereas Juneteenth became the 11th American federal holiday on June 17th, 2021, the first holiday to obtain legal observance since Martin 13th Junior Day. And whereas all 50 states and the District of Columbia now recognize Juneteenth as a holiday or observance, and at least 22 states and the District of Columbia have designated Juneteenth as a permanent date and/or legal holiday through legislation or executive action. And
Whereas Black Hawk County has proportionally the largest population of all counties. And whereas the addition of the Juneteenth holiday to the Black Hawk County calendar allows county staff and the community the opportunity to celebrate human freedom, reflect on the grievous legacy of slavery, and dedicate ourselves to eliminating all forms of racism that plague our society as we strive to deliver the full promise of freedom and equality for all Americans. And
Whereas in Black Hawk County, Juneteenth has been uplifted and celebrated on the 3rd Saturday in June for 29 years through efforts of local social justice organizations. And this year will take place on June 15th at Sullivan Park in Waterloo along with other community celebrations recognizing the holiday throughout the county. Now therefore,
be it hereby resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Black Hawk County does hereby recognize Juneteenth as a Black Hawk County work holiday on June 19th and urges the community to become more aware of the significance of this celebration and recognition of African-American history in our nation and our county. Signed, this 11th day of June, 2024.
Thank you, and I love your clothing work.
So at this time, I'd like to invite all committee members to come up to the Board of Supervisors, and if you guys wanna come around and we'll take a quick photo acknowledging that the proclamation, I don't know, is there any other stuff after we read it? Don't believe so.
Roll call.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe you wanted to do the roll call first.
Oh, okay, we'll get the follow-up.
Okay. Sure. Okay, yep. So go ahead. Okay, so we might have some of the down a little bit, we're gonna get a little tight. There we go. We're coming a little bit more. I'll get that weekend, we're coming a little bit more.
We can just pan around.
And then. Alright, okay.
Yeah, but I'm also the official photo paper.
Okay, here we go. Alright. All this good. Ready? One, two, three. And Michelle, go like this, just, there we go. One, two, three. There we go.
Thank you.
I don't know if you wanna do your roll call first or not, but Latonya Graves is online, and I don't know, Latonya, if you wanted to say a few words about the local Juneteenth celebration that's coming up on Saturday?
Yes, Phyllis and Latonya.
Okay, thank you, guys. Good morning. So, again, as you heard in that proclamation, it is our 29th year celebrating Juneteenth in Waterloo. And we're going to start it off with a peace walk that will begin at Ferguson Field. Dr. Belinda Creighton-Smith and Marvin Spencer Jr. spearhead that. And so we'll begin at Ferguson Field at 12 noon, and they will walk, and all those that participate, to Sullivan. And then once everyone arrives in Sullivan, the Crusaders Drill Team will kick it off. And after that, we will have the proclamation by Mayor Quentin Hart, Juneteenth history by Reverend Abraham Funches, and then we will have presentations of awards, and then we will also have the Black Hawk County proclamation read at that time. And then the activities will begin. Hip-hop literacy will be performing. A dance ministry from Union Baptists will be performing. God's Angels from Christian Fellowship will be performing. And then Adam Cornelius, he's a guitarist, he will be performing. And so we're gonna have a juggler that will be stilt-walking and doing balloons. We'll have kids' activities, a softball game, basketball game. And EJ Jones, he's an artist from Memphis, Tennessee, and he will be in concert at 5:00 PM. You guys should Google this young man. He is, I mean, like, awesome. Google EJ Jones. So he will be in concert at 5:00 PM. And then at 6:30, Hart Smith, we will hear the soulful sounds of Hart Smith, and they will be onstage from 6:30 to 8:30. We will have food vendors, we will have vendors selling t-shirts and hats and jewelry. And so we want everyone to come out and celebrate the 29th Annual Juneteenth Celebration with us. All are welcome.
Alright, thank you, Latonya.
Thank you.
General call vote, please.
Stuart, I just wanna say, I'm sorry I couldn't be there today in person. But this committee, just our first two meetings in so far, it's been wonderful to work with all these folks from across our county departments. And the thoughtfulness, the intentionality that they're bringing to this work is, it really represents the best of Black Hawk County.
Alright, thank you Supervising Courts. General call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Item number four, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as a law. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our claims payment today is $337,042.31. And out of that, the Share of 6040 Fund is $1,963.07. And we are starting to make a few payments on capital projects. We've got one in here to DOT for Casey Light Restoration for $37,228.38. And small and origin design, nothing else significant today.
I'll make a motion to approve. So. Roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Item number five, receive project updates from department heads, elected officials. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to find an update? Ryan?
Morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. This week, we did close Tama Road between Dyzer and La Porte City. Our bridge crews out there doing some cover replacements in advance of our paving project next year. We also will be closing Dunkerton Road, Lopsy Burger, next Monday. That'll probably be closed for two or three weeks. We have some bridge painting to complete on the bridge we did some repairs on from last year. Other than that, our maintenance crews are out just hauling mile rock. We are mowing on both the paved roads and the gravel roads this week. Griffin is also out doing a lot of purpose-app applications, so. Questions?
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom? Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Given, Facilities Director. Been a couple of weeks since giving an update on the projects that we have going on, particularly here at the courthouse. So, I do have quite a list here, but with the, with regards to the courthouse construction, it's going very well. We started the painting process throughout the Phase 1 areas. Phase 1 is the Elections Department in the basement, the new Elections Department, formerly the Auditors. Some of the items that we have remaining are ceiling work, casework, flooring, doors, and hardware. We are on track for Phase 1 to be completed by the beginning of August. At that time, then Phase 2 will start. And that is expected to take us all the way up until the election. Then we'll take a bit of a break, and then we'll start on the Phase 3, which would be the Treasures Department. Some of the inconveniences, obviously you heard before the meeting started, is the noise. That's kind of what we've been battling, but short of that, the project's been going very well. It's actually very smooth, and no real issues have popped up. Lead times, we were a little concerned with some of the HVAC equipment, but that ended up resolving itself, and that's kind of what you heard this morning, some of that going in. So, as far as that project goes, it's going great. I couldn't ask for a better crew here.
You mentioned Rory going up right up until the elections time. Do you have an idea or a date, I guess, for when you're thinking? That would kind of be.
The 1st of November is what we have listed on our project chart, so it will take us right up to that point. Yes.
I'm just knowing that it's gonna be a busy time.
Now, but keep in mind, Phase 1 will address the election with regards to the basement and the Elections Department. So, that particular phase would then be what would be the new Auditor's area.
So that part of the election, or the voting, would be happening in the basement?
Absolutely, yep. So that part of it, we're on track to get that completed well before that process.
Yeah, sorry, do you have an estimate for that?
Yes, that one, we're, Phase 1 completion is the beginning of August. So that's, that's going quite quickly, and it should give us plenty of time to have a smooth process during this major election, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Today, we've got a, actually, we've got a pre-bid meeting for the AV equipment for this room. That, we're asking for bids to be due on June 28th. That's just going to improve our our zooming, our teams, or whatever you wanna call it, capabilities. I know we've had a few issues in the past with recording, and so hopefully with this new system, that'll be a much more seamless process. So again, that, that pre-bid meeting is scheduled to take place in this room this week. Pine Crest and the VA renovations. This, this work will also be done in phases. The VA, the Health Department, and the DHS movement. We've started site verification and design modeling within Vision Architect and Modus Engineering. A lot of legwork's gone into that up to this point. You'll see later on in this, on the agenda, we do have a formal approval request for that professional services from Envision. The former EPI building on Idaho is actually vacated at this point, and we are in touch with EPI to make arrangements to do a final walkthrough and to receive keys for that building. So that is in motion. We are, for that particular project, are, what we're looking at is document completion in November and awarding contracts by December 17th, meeting the ARPA deadline of the end of the year. That does get us a little close, but this is a very large project, and we feel we're gonna need that kind of time to get this done correctly, so. HVAC upgrade project, that's another ARPA project that's, that's in the works, and that's gonna involve the courthouse, the Pine Crest building, and the jail. Focus of that project is to improve functionality, control systems, and ultimately improve indoor air quality on all three locations. For the jail, it'll also include some negative air pressure cell rooms. So if we do ever get into a situation where we do need to isolate, we'll have that capability over there, which will be very nice. Much of the Pine Crest HVAC work will be working concurrently with the Health Department renovations. So the two projects are gonna be kind of working side by side to get that taken care of. And then we're also going to take care of the fire suppression system within this scope of work for the main IT server room here at the courthouse. All of these projects, right now, I'm being told by both professional services that that the contracts will be awarded before the end of the year to meet the ARPA deadline. Today, this afternoon, we're actually taking our phone system, we're going to be removing from copper and going to fiber, which has been an ongoing project. Keep our fingers crossed that this goes smoothly. Sometimes it doesn't when you're dealing with the phone company, but this is, this is a big one. Then our next step will be installing SIP interfacing, and vendor states that that could take up to three months to get completed. That's where we'll get some of the functionality with our phone system. Soft phones, for an example, ability to do the notifications throughout the building through your computers. So there's, there's a lot of functionality. It gives the users the ability to easily change their voicemails or add in hot groups. Like, for example, at the Health Department, some of those areas might have three or four people that will take calls, and it gives those operatives, those folks, the ability to program that themselves. Whereas now, we have to go in and do that. The new building on Sycamore, former Raymount, we did have an electrical public hearing that is going to get rescheduled for later on this month. And that lease actually ends at the end of this month, and that was the deadline. We, there will be no more coming to the board for extensions on that, so. Parking lot resurfacing, you may have noticed, we've started that here last week. That is scheduled to be completed by the end of June. It's gonna be a complete resurfacing of the employee parking lot. We've already done a whole, a big chunk of curb and gutter repair here at the courthouse and the jail, also over at Pine Crest, and then we'll also be reworking the stormwater intakes out here at the parking lot. If you've noticed, a lot of them are sunk in quite a bit, so those will all be cut out and reworked, and it ought to be a very very nice project when we're all done with that one. And we're also where the garbage dumpsters are here at the courthouse. We're actually gonna cut that out and end up putting concrete just to give us more life for that space, given the amount of weight with the trucks coming in and emptying those dumpsters. So we're actually going to make a concrete pad for that. I don't know if you've noticed, but there's been some settling over in that area, so. The Small Group, the Department Relocation, a small committee. We've been working with, our primary goal right now is the Attorney's Department, looking at what possibilities there might be for them, focus on getting them out of the basement. We've actually visited six off-site locations. We're gonna meet after this meeting, kind of go through that. Out of those six, there are a few that are, that have some great potential, I feel, so we'll see what those next steps look like. My goal is to be able to bring something to the board with regards to options and see where that lies.
So that, will we get back for vacation?
Yes, yeah, yes. Yep, I will be out next week, so.
Neil, you have a lot going on.
Yeah, there's a few things. The code enforcement, every year this time, code enforcement, we see a bit of an uptick with springtime. And we've seen that, it hasn't been terrible, but we have had a few reoccurring complaints. One thing that I would like to work with the board moving forward on our ordinance, I know we've talked about it in the past, but one thing I would like to kind of look at is maybe some suggestions on changing how we, how we look at rural areas with regards to tall grass and whether you have neighbors within so many feet, and see if we can't maybe fine-tune that to give us a little bit more teeth to go after some of these properties that have been reoccurring. So I think that moving forward, that'll definitely be some conversation I think we need to have with regard to the ordinance. Maintenance, our, our staff is very much looking forward to the HVAC upgrades that we have coming up. The courthouse fire alarm panel is complete. We finished that a few weeks ago. And we're gonna be preparing for inspections over at the jail here very soon. That is a little bit of where we're at right now. Any questions in all that rambling?
No, it's good information.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Any others in the boardroom? Do we have any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to provide an update?
So, good morning, Board. It's Jill Lando Lovless, Director of Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. And I'd just like to share just a few brief slides this morning with you, kind of just going over. Let's see if it allows me to do that. Okay.
Alright. It looks like it's coming up.
Okay. And I apologize for not being there in person on that standpoint, but I do wanna just take time out to thank Michelle for our Finance Director for participating in our monthly meetings with the with, with the Commissioners. She's there, addressing questions and answers associated with our finances and any other things. So we, we take time out to thank Michelle. And then what I have here today is just, we lost one of our volunteers recently. In fact, it was last Thursday, we lost one of our volunteers who has volunteered for our picnics for the last five and a half years. And so she went quietly, but we're just recognizing joy for all of her commitment, not just with the Board of Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs Office, but with various other service organizations throughout the community in that standpoint. Additionally, I would like to take my hat off to Supervisor Tavis Hall and his staff at Experienced Waterloo. The last almost two weeks, we've had the seven bike riders that are using the Great American Trail, and they brag about the Cedar Valley Nature Trail in that standpoint. But those seven riders are, have now come into Black Hawk County. We've provided meals, we've provided rooms, we've provided transportation to Walmart and various other places that they can resupply. The last riders that went through, they're currently in Marshalltown, and they stayed on a golf course in a tent. So we brag kind of like that we provide the service that is rendered. Again, these are combat veterans who are riding their bike across the country from Washington DC to Washington State, and they look forward to stopping into the Cedar Valley, in particular Black Hawk County, because of the the love that we show them in that standpoint and the shared experiences. One of the riders was a he was in a helicopter crash in Afghanistan, and that didn't kill him. So he was a parachuter, and he had a hard landing where he almost lost his leg, and that didn't deter him, and he's up on a bike riding at 3,700 miles. So that's very encouraging to know that each one of them are experiencing some type of combat something that harms them, whether it's emotionally or physically, and they're doing this as a something to encourage them, something to remind them of who they are and that they're very important in that standpoint, especially when it comes to the mental health. And we look forward to this, our third year, and I thank the Board of Supervisors and my Commission for supporting us that we allowed to do that to help these veterans as they transit through the state of Iowa on their way to Omaha and others. We had some May donations that came in, but one of the big things that we're, we're getting more and more involved with, as you know, May is our, probably our most busiest month out of the year in that standpoint. And Bigford Senior Living asked us to come participate in their Wall of Honor. And Commissioner Corf and Mr. Butler, they went out with me to celebrate that Wall of Honor. And it was, it was very humbling to interact with the surviving spouses and the veterans that reside right there in Bigford in that standpoint. The other thing I wanted to share with you is just how busy our Commission is in that standpoint through the month. A couple of things was we had the bus trip where we lost Commissioner Larry Walters, and he was in tune down at the Iowa Cemetery. Commissioner Butler and Michelle from our office went down in, in support of our office for that family. This is my third year with Regional 4, UAW. They've asked us to come back to Tamwa, Ottawa, excuse me, and speak on veteran benefits and particularly the PACT Act. And, and so we're excited about that. Every year they, they do that in that standpoint. But you could kind of see, and I just wanted to highlight just a few things there. Our month-to-month statistics, you could see that, and I, we kind of shared these with you. Nothing that jumps out other than May, there was a little dip in production throughout, but we Um, production, uh, throughout, um, but, um, we, we. Contribute some of that to, uh, the holidays and, uh, school graduations. One of the big things that I kind of want to talk about with the May success stories, um. It's a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars in federal dollars being paid out to. Uh, veterans in Black Hawk County and, um, some various other counties. From their claims or their, uh, compensations and pensions that they pull out provided. And right now, the claims process usually will take about three to four months. From start to finish, now it's extended out to about six to seven because of the backlog from the PACT Act. And what that does is, um, a, a veteran claims, he puts a claim in, and let's say January, the, the claim comes back in July. The VA pays all the way back to the date that the claim was submitted, so that's where this, um. Residual retro pay comes in, um, and that's just federal dollars that I just wanted to let you guys know that. It's coming back into the county, you're aware of that. The other thing that I kind of wanted to point out was. That since the PACT Act was signed by the president back in August, uh, tenth of twenty-twenty-two, uh. The VA has granted over one million PACT Act related disabilities, uh, countrywide. And so that's benefiting, um, all the veterans throughout the fifty states in that standpoint. And what's very impressive is it's pretty much at a seventy-five percent approval rate, so they're granting almost seventy-five percent of the. Claims that are submitted in that standpoint. Couple of things is, um, I'm just showing you that, but the, the one that I really wanted to bring out was the geographical distribution of VA expenditures. This is again, federal dollars coming into our county alone, um, in that standpoint, and I'm looking at twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two. And twenty-twenty-three, and the two things that I want you to, to look at is. That our veteran population is continually to dwindle, um, in that standpoint. But total expenditures, whether it's compensation, whether it's healthcare or education, those expenditures are continually to grow up, um, and so. Uh, our, the federal dollars that are coming into our county, um. We are, um, on the receiving end of that and we're very proud that. We see more and more residual income coming into these veterans who earn it, who are suffering from either a combat illness or mental health illness. And then with our, uh, general service to our veterans, you can see. Uh, where we're at there, and I just wanted to take, uh, two minutes to kind of look at this one. If you look at funeral expenses last year or prior, we spent about eleven thousand dollars, um. Supporting veterans who may not was able to afford a, the family was not able to afford a funeral or the cremation. Um, this year, going into the last month of this FY twenty-four, uh, you could see, uh, that we've only spent about six thousand of that. Um, the other difference is last year with shelter, we spent about seven thousand. Uh, this year we've only spent about seventeen hundred, um, in that standpoint. So we're looking at that, monitoring that to see what the difference is, um, in that standpoint of, um. We, we can see that society is doing well, there's jobs available, we are encouraging our veterans to seek employment. And, uh, so we're seeing those numbers continue to go down year by year, um, in that standpoint, just wanted to share that with you. Um, our intake for revenue, uh, for the month of May, um, a total of thirty-one hundred dollars. Uh, five hundred of, of that dollars was in memory of Larry Waters, his family did a, um. Uh, requested that if they wanted, if people wanted to contribute to Larry, that they give it to our office in that standpoint. Uh, so just wanted to share that, and then lastly, what we do for veterans, um, the May Day baskets, uh, we, we are. Um, every month we're hitting either assisted living or a independent living or a nursing home. Um, and we're reminding them, uh, those veterans and those surviving spouses in those facilities. Uh, that we still care, so we spent about six hundred dollars in, in May Day baskets, uh, that we've, uh, shared throughout. The various nursing homes, independent, uh, living, uh, also helping veterans with their, um, utilities, their shelters. Uh, gas cards, um, and then with the Iowa Trust Fund. Uh, we spent about, uh, well, the state paid out eight thousand dollars for ver- for various veterans. Who, uh, needed home repair, vehicle repair, and then the dental. Um, other than that, that is it, I just wanted to kind of share that with you because. Again, the month of May is one of our busiest months, um, you can see how busy we, we are. Our staff, last week we put on our first luncheon, um, and, uh, we bought a hundred and fif- a hundred and ten. Chick-fil-A box meals and they all went out the door, so we, we had about eighty-eight people, uh, participate in our first one. Uh, and that's, and, uh, so we'll do that every Thursday, and one of the things that we're trying to do to help spend down revenue. Is we're going to do more of a catering, um, from various services like Starbucks, uh, and other various restaurants. To help and, uh, we really are seeing the smiles on the veterans' faces when things are catered in and they're getting a, a nourish. Um, a refreshing meal, um, and it's free, um, based off the donations that our veterans have had in that standpoint, so. Again, I just kind of wanted to share those federal dollars that are coming in, um, and, uh, that we are a dwindling, um, force. Um, in that standpoint, there's another slide that kind of goes into our population and how the VA tracks our population. Um, and our World War II veterans and our Korean veterans, uh, they are, they're dwindling, uh, pretty fast in that standpoint. Other than that, just anybody addressing any questions or concerns.
All right, thank you, Yolando, and thanks for emailing that, uh, presentation to us.
Board, you know that, uh, Yolanda's a resource. You know, he's fantastic at the job that he does at the, at the Veterans Affairs, but I have to tell you a, a personal story. Last week, we had the unfortunate opportunity to be, uh, called out to a veteran suicide. And, um, when we got on scene, um, it was an eighteen-year Army, US Army Ranger. And the demons got too, too bad for him. Uh, he had been there most of the night. He had a US Army Ranger canine that retired with him, standing over the body. And as the story was relayed to us, five US Army Ranger buddies. From Fort Bragg met five Waverly Shell Rock girls down in Fort Bragg or down in North Carolina. On spring break, and one by one, they started marrying those girls and eventually followed them back to Iowa. And, um. They, uh, all. Co-located in, in this area. And unfortunately, uh, for this young lady, uh. She didn't know what to do. And I can tell you that when we had. The unfortunate duty to both notify her of the suicide. But also the obligation to provide her with resource. Knowing that we had Yolando in our back pocket, knowing that we had. The robust services available to us of Black Hawk County Veteran Affairs and. Not just the office, but the genuineness of Mr. Lovelace. Um, it certainly made our job three thousand percent easier. Um, and we knew that that family was going to be taken care of. And both because of the quality of the service that this gentleman provided, uh, to our country, but also. Uh, what that family deserved, uh, as a result. We knew that we were leaving them in better hands, uh, because of the service that, uh, Yolanda provides to our county, so last week. Uh, what could have been just an absolutely horrendous experience for all of us, uh, Yolanda made it better for us. So I wanted to express that to you all today, um. What was a, what was a bittersweet call, uh, certainly was made better because of, uh, the quality of service that he provides for us. Thank you.
Sheriff, we appreciate that, because Yolando should lead as a man of humility and without you telling us, we wouldn't have known. The great lengths that he went to with this situation, but that he always does, so, thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
I, I just want to, uh, jump on, uh, Yolando spoke to the, the Warrior Expedition. So. It's great that we've been able to, uh, with experience Waterloo, been able to, uh, partner for, uh. Three years, I believe, uh, in welcoming those riders, it just happens to COVID side, uh. Was probably the most hectic time, uh, for us with my Waterloo days, but, uh, we had two of those folks join us for the festival on, on Saturday night and. Uh, able to house them on Sunday, it is. Luckily, we're able to put them in hotel stays, it does sound like a lot of communities. The Yolando's point, uh, they're on intense, uh, golf courses, uh, the night before they got to us. A couple of them were on, uh, a, a concrete floor, um. Uh, you know, it's, it's a long expedition, it, it is an expedition, uh, on a bike to, to. To get around the coun- to get across the country that way, um, facing headwinds the entire way, so I think they might want to rethink that route, but, oh. Uh, it really, the partnership that we've got professionally with, with, uh. With Yolando and his team has really proved beneficial and it all started from Cherie over at Conservation. In making some connections, uh, and bringing us on, so, uh, the fact that. It is all levels of county government that recognizes the service of these folks. Um, and the value that they bring to our community and country, um, Yolano certainly honors that. Uh, on a, on a daily basis, so shout out to him, to you.
Any other department heads or elected officials either in the boardroom or on Zoom? All right, we will move on to item number six, approval of the meeting minutes from June eleventh. Roll call, well, are all in favor, say aye, uh, aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say no. We will have a hearing later in the meeting, this is in regard to the proposed purchase of body worn and vehicle mounted cameras. Item number eight is the consent agenda.
Second.
General call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Item nine-eight, contracts and agreements, this is a resolution that the renewal agreement between Black Hawk County and Employee Family Resources. And the county's employee assistance program provider. Effective July first, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, with a ten, uh, one thousand dollar increase for the wellness program. Be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Amanda Fessenmeyer, Human Resource. Second. Amanda?
Um, so not much changed here, but there is a slight increase for the wellness program that was new. Um, actually, this entire agreement was a little new last year as we went to our own agreement with EFR for the EAP program in wellness. Uh, that wellness piece allows us to offer monthly webinars and annual trainings, quarterly trainings. Um, everything from, you know, meditation to breathing exercises, to stretching exercises, and we have sprinkled those throughout the departments. Um, at some of their safety meetings, at some of their annual staff meetings or monthly staff meetings, so. Um, there's been a lot of great topics that we've heard, uh, positive feedback from employees, um, on the new contract. And we'll just continue to recommend to approve this and push out the materials that we receive. So, we did also add in the assessor's office, they were on their own separate agreement, um, and I think that, uh, just. Or administratively makes more sense for us to be able to push this information out to everyone here at the county, so they are now included in this as well.
All right.
Questions?
Thank you, certainly it's an important program.
Thank you.
General call vote, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes, nine B is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Fresh Start Cleaning Solutions Incorporated, Denver, Iowa. For janitorial service, services of the courthouse, jail, juvenile court services and Pinecrest. Uh, with a bid amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars annually, be approved and for the chair to sign the contract. Conditional on the receipt of certificate of insurance as recommended by Rory Gimming, Facilities Director. Second. Rory?
Yes, uh, so we did receive two, uh, bids on this. Uh, Fresh Start was the, uh, low bid, uh, that was about a nine-point-five percent increase from the, uh. Previous year, uh, and we do make the recommendation to, uh, sign this agreement for, for the next three years.
All right, any questions?
Rory, this is Tom, are we still within the budget amount or are we going to go over on this?
We're going to be over just a bit, what we typically do is about a five percent increase each, each year on that, so, uh. With this being at nine-point-five, we will be just a bit over on what we anticipated.
Thank you.
General call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Item nine-C is a resolution to approve and send opposed proposal received from Envision Architects for Black Hawk County Pinecrest Building. Public Health Veterans Affairs renovations in the amount of four hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars.
So.
Second. I do have a question, Rory, I was gonna say the contract that I think you forwarded was for four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars. So, there's about fifteen thousand difference from this, I just.
Oh, yes, uh, what I did is, uh, there was a recommendation to add an additional fifteen thousand for, uh. Structural and civil design services, just so we can capture that, uh, in case it's needed, and so I added that fifteen thousand to that amount.
And these are ARPA dollars, is that correct?
No, this actually is going to be our, uh.
Technically, it is.
It's lost revenue.
Revenue, but, but a different category.
Got it. Thanks.
All right, uh, roll call vote, Jen.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Item ten-A, under other business, a resolution that the policy revision to the non-bargaining holidays policy. Be approved effective July first, twenty-twenty-four is recommended by the Policy Review Committee. Second. Amanda?
Yep, okay, so our policy review, I committee met. Oh, a couple of weeks ago, and this is just to reflect the board approving Juneteenth and adding it into the non-bargaining holiday policies. Um, it's already been reflected in the, um, like the bargaining agreements for all of our union staff, so. Um, we're just formally recognizing it and updating the policy to put on our website. And I think we also made one modification, instead of calling it a birthday holiday, we just changed it to a personal holiday.
Okay. Any other questions? General call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Item ten-B, a resolution that the policy revision to the non-bargaining compensation and classification policy be approved. Effective July first, twenty-twenty-four is re- recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
Okay, so this is a little bit more updates with the classification and compensation policy for non-bargaining employees. And mainly is to reflect the classification and compensation study that was completed, um, this earlier this year, um, by Gallagher, uh, Consulting, so. Uh, we did make some changes in here to actually reference not only the factor point evaluation and classification plan adopted back in nineteen eighty-one. But now the county-wide classification compensation study completed in twenty-twenty-four. Um, it does lay out the similar, uh, factors that we include when we evaluate a non-bargaining, um, position. And how we determine the salary and the pay range, uh, for that. We did also reference, um, that pay grades, um, for non-bargaining, the midpoints are approximate to the actual median base salaries paid to positions. In the relevant labor markets reported in periodic salary survey results, so this does allow us to have kind of a refresh. Um, and look into this to make sure that we're not too misaligned, um, in any particular area with our positions. Um, it also states that in the classification and compensation study completed in twenty-twenty-four, that we did place the salary ranges. Um, compared with market compensation levels for positions within each range. And appropriate adjustments were made for positions where the market pay was not consistent with the established salary range, and that was approved. Um, in conjunction with working with Michelle Weidner, our finance director, and the board to get that budgeted for a completed. So, all of the information in here does fall in line, in alignment with the, um, budget that was approved by the Board of Supervisors for the full year twenty-five. The cost of living adjustments, um, it used to list that it was a maximum of three percent, we saw an increase with that within the unions and non-bargaining, so I did just eliminate the maximum. We always said that as to whatever, um, that, uh, HOLA or the, uh. Consumer Price Index, um, the information that we've received from Galloway and Ayler's in, in our office to. Direct that to be either below or above, but we just kind of eliminated the three percent max. And then the big one is merit increases, so currently the plan, um, if you were a non-bargain employee. And you entered that fourth quartile of the pay range, the policy said that you do not get a merit increase. And we did change that, um, so that you continue to get at least a one percent and continue to move within your scale. Because we had a lot of people that just halted and then they never really had the opportunity to reach that maximum or continue to reach the maximum of the pay range. Lastly, we did have a change with, um. The interim or temporary assignments, uh, we were pretty low on how we awarded compensation if somebody were to. Uh we were pretty low on how we awarded compensation if somebody were to temporarily fill in for a higher level position. Um it stated previously that they would receive a five percent increase. Um we have a few department heads speak to that. Uh that really was not reflective of the additional responsibilities and duties they had to take on. We upped that to they can receive up to a fifteen percent pay increase. And then for compensation during temporary assignment or acting as interim department head, that used to be ten percent. We also ordered that um it would be a minimum of fifteen percent increase. The only need would be above that would be if you're um you could be moved to the bottom of the pay grade if you were, say, you know. Six or eight pay grades below that department head, then you would just be moved to the bottom of that um salary range, so. So that was all that came out of the compensation classification study and some of the recommendations, and we recommend to approve this and we will share that um with the non bargaining employees.
I'll make a motion to approve, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Amanda?
And I should note, any questions on this one? Um so we will be bringing forward a few more policies in the future, in the near future, we have some with I T that our policy review committee reviewed. Uh we're also looking at um our driving uh policy and some of the areas that need to be updated in there. Um drug and alcohol abuse as well, looking at that, and then telework and remote policy is one that um the committee requested that our office get to. Develop the policy um and and move that through the policy review committee for approval and by the board, so. We'll be putting on those items, policies. And if you have any, you know, questions or concerns, you can certainly reach out to myself or Chris or Tom, uh Grant and Mike Trenton who are all serve on the policy review committee.
All right.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Layman?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Item ten C is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for public hearing bid opening to be held at nine oh five A M on July second, twenty twenty four. In boardroom two oh one of the Black Hawk County courthouse. Three one six East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed project L F M thirty thirty two, seven X zero seven. Bridge deck patching and structural concrete repairs in various locations throughout Black Hawk County. Second.
Second.
The move been seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, say no. Item ten D is a motion to approve bringing the Chinese food truck to use Black Hawk County grounds on June eighteenth, twenty twenty four eleven, from eleven A M to one P M. In the southeast parking lot of the Pinecrest building located at fourteen oh seven Independence Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa. Any questions? All who's in favor, say aye?
Aye, aye.
All who's opposed, say no, it's approved. Ten E is a hearing, it is now nine fifty two A M. And this is a hearing bid opening for the proposed purchase of body worn and vehicle mounted cameras and digital evidence management systems. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication and notice.
So both.
So all who's in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All who's opposed, say no. Al? Let's see, this is a motion to close the hearing after we have received oral written comments. I'll make that motion. But, all right. Do we have, we're gonna have Al make some comments and then Jen will let us know if we've had any other comments, Al, please.
Morning Board, Al U I T Director, we received four bids uh from this R F P and uh whenever we're ready, uh do you have any questions before we start opening bids?
Do we, do we get any comments at all?
No comments.
All right, uh this is a motion to close the hearing. Uh all who's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
No, it is, uh it has passed, all right, Al, let's open the bids. Open them and read it.
All right.
Al, what was the budgeted about?
Uh the estimate amount was seven hundred fifty thousand.
Thank you.
First one is from Sector. Uh they are a reseller of the brand G-Tech. Not put a cover letter.
Are there demerits for not following your directive?
Well, I asked them to put a cover letter so we're not awkwardly.
I know you did.
Going through here, so. I don't know, these are tailored, I don't know. Well, if you want, if you don't mind, look through these and I'm gonna move to the next one. Thanks, sorry. Hey, the next bidder is Motorola Solutions. And uh I will provide a, on those forms, I'll provide on my tri- version with all the addresses and they fill out, so you don't worry about the address. Um they have provided a five year bid term for three hundred and ninety nine thousand. So that's three nine nine zero zero zero. They also offered a optional ten year term. That's at nine hundred and eighty nine thousand, nine eight nine zero zero zero.
Al, what was the uh, when it was bid out, what was the terms on there, term limit, there it was wide open?
Uh the term li- the term limits were for um a five and a ten year, optional ten year.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm blind and I didn't even see that it was right on the front. Here, say thank you. Was there anything else you needed on the Motorola one? Okay, uh let me go back to Sector. Um they offered a five year contract for the amount of. Four hundred and sixty three thousand, one hundred and sixty five and fifty one cents, that's four six three comma one six five fifty one. And that is Sector. It's the company, it's the reseller.
That was for a five year?
That's a five year, yeah. And they, it does not appear they put a ten year under.
Please, I'm gonna do one more album over again.
Okay, the next bid is from a company called Utility. And they offered a five year contract term at five hundred thousand, even, five zero 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 zero. They also offered a ten year term at eight hundred and seventy five thousand, that's eight seven five zero zero zero. And the last vendor is Axon. Uh Axon Enterprises, they offered a five year term. At seven hundred fifty four thousand, one eighty three and sixteen cents, that's seven five four comma one eight three and sixteen. They also offered a ten year term. At one million, four hundred seventy two thousand, eight hundred twenty five and ninety two cents, that's one comma four seven two comma eight two five and ninety two. Um they did offer additional uh optional additional equipment. Uh that would be in reference to the taser. Um that five year term amount is two hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred eighty two and forty eight cents, that's two nine seven. Comma six eight two and forty cents. And they off, they also offered a ten year optional uh term for that additional equipment. And that comes in at six hundred and twenty eight thousand, two hundred and thirty six and eighty cents, that's six two eight comma two three six and eighty cents. Look at this, that goes well, but I think it repeats the same thing. Okay, yep, that just repeats the same thing.
And they're the only vendor that had that additional equipment, correct?
They are the only manufacturer of tasers.
Al, this is Tom, who's our current vendor?
Uh our current vendor is Watch Guard, who was acquired by Motorola.
Okay, thank you.
The estimate of seven hundred fifty thousand, was that for a five year?
That was for a five year.
Okay. Now, do we have an estimate on the ten or?
Uh for, for um, no, I n- I never created a estimate, that's fine, we just have that as an option.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion that the board of supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Al U I T Director.
So both.
We have a motion and a second, all who's in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All who's opposed, say no, it passes. Item number eleven is our canvas, assertively out promote the votes cast in the primary election come Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty four. Orders with high local forty three point four.
Yes, we need a motion now.
Yeah, we'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second, all right, uh let's do this, it shouldn't be that extensive, correct? But there was a lot of paper there.
Yeah, by the looks of it.
Essentially, your canvas name for all parties, I'm sorry, we're trying to forget lots, so there's a lot of good words.
Yeah.
You guys might help.
One person each could assist each one of us.
Uh sorry to be missing the fun today.
But are you?
Your absence was strategic.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Shelley, you gonna help, I'll come by mic.
So I'm gonna have you guys pull out your books at the same time and then I'll sort it's blocking through what it looks like, so it makes sense. Yeah.
All right.
So and all of your books are gonna have. And then it'll have some democratic on one page, Republican's number three, and the whole newspaper's gonna follow along.
I see.
So you'll, on the results, it will be the one tape, but you'll have a change for each party.
And I'll start with the name, that way I'll take that stat as your Sarah Lordry, wrapping up with tapes, I will sign, give it to the general. If you can, there are seven.
Oh, yes.
Layman, seven.
Yeah.
Schwartz, eight. Yep. Well, let's see, Schwartz or nine.
Okay.
Last second, that's eight. Republican. And I'm just gonna do notes. Thirty one. Seven, ten, eight, twenty eight, twenty nine.
That'll do, I think, yeah.
Yep.
Libertarian. All right, give me that. Or they brought Zelgrun Heights now.
Three, sixteen, seventeen, yeah.
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, yeah.
Wow. Fifteen? One, fifteen, okay.
Okay. Eleven. Everything else there. Two.
And seven, one, six, eleven, eleven. Only two.
Justin Brown.
Libertarian Party. As a tail war one. The Democratic. Three, three. Yep, four, yep, thirteen for him. That's thirteen for him. Living sale war one. That was Perry and the party, they're all there. I skipped that, I'm sorry, I'll pull it out here a little longer. And sale war two and four. Four, three, thirty five, thirty five, thirty four. Eighteen, thirty, twenty one, and two. Thirty five, or it's three, one, sorry, thirty two. Republican Party, Henson, thirty one, anyone, seven, fourteen, twelve, six, twenty five, zero, three. Libertarian. Seven, sale wars, three, two. Eight, zero, eleven. Libertarian Party, we actually have some numbers here, oh no, I'm sure Republican. Henson, ten. One, five, eight, nine, nine. Zero, zero. All right, Libertarian.
Yeah, let me, let me try this, thirty four, one, thirty six.
All right, all right, four, three, seventeen, eighteen, supervisor, fourteen, eleven, twenty, twenty six, two, order twenty nine. Sheriff, seven, Republican, Henson, seventy five, seven, one, eleven, sixty one, seventy. Seven, one eleven, sixty one, seventy two. Libertarian and Hudson, zero. Vernon, four three, eight, zero, zero.
You'll figure out.
Seven, alright, five, thirty one, or sorry, thirty four, one right. Republican Party, Henson, five, name is thirty six, so, supervisor, seven, eight, one five, eleven, one. Thirty three, one right. No Libertarian, no Libertarian. Really? Libertarian, twelve. Four three, sixteen, two, sixteen, supervisor, right of. Eighteen, one, right of, sheriff. Republican, Henson, thirty six, seven, ninety, thirty two, zero, zero. Waterloo, Ward, someone. Alright, it's actually. Libertarian Party had one. Thirty nine, thirty seven, twenty one, twenty eight, thirty. Libertarian, you know. Lot of homework in Henson, nine. Alright. Well, quarter eight, forty. Thirty nine, thirty eight, thirty nine, Republican, twenty five, three, two, zero. Libertarian, zero. Four three, twenty one, twenty one, thirteen, eleven, sixteen. Libertarians.
A lot of people wanna come. It is.
Nine, advisor, seventy, twenty two, thirty five, thirty, one hundred five, one hundred fifty one. Waterloo, four, two, three, six, four. Four three, fifty cents, fifty eight. Forty, thirty five, forty five, forty five. Fifty two, thirty one, forty nine. Republican Party, Henson, thirty. Yes, yes. Oh, hey. See, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Forty four, forty eight, twenty eight. Republican Party, Henson, forty two, thirty nine, three. War two, Waterloo, war two, three. Waterloo, war two, three, five, thirty dollars, sheriff, six, five. Four three, seven, thirteen, nine, eight, eleven. Four three left, and sheriff, supervisor.
Um this is a cute.
Three six, brown college, twenty five, supervisor, seventeen, one. Right in, one, supervisor, five, few sheriffs, right in. Libertarian, one. Take some, yeah. Five two, forty nine, eighty, oh nine, two right, twelve, seven, period, twenty five, one right in. She put that right.
Yes.
Five, right in, two.
Oh, you didn't.
Two right ends. Conny bells are, yes, you know, I'm gonna nerd, they say no, so. Every time I have this, really, uh. They're not even helping me with it. You're helping me with. Sheriff, eight, and I'm not even the one.
Oh, really?
Oh, oh, US. I don't have any money, then.
Was it great to you?
Fifty eight, seventy one, forty seven, seventy five. He's a good man. No, they find a second, Henson, three four. Right in, right. Two, one, two, right. Leave that good channel like you with this, or you can do it. Oh, and three right in. State Senate District Thirty Eight, begins work in the town. District sixty one, in Brown College, ten. District. Seventy five, pressing, one, right in. Right now, one. Supervisor, equal, two eighty one. Eighty one, hundred fifty three, two eighty three, and I bring all the. Auditor, four hundred. Oh, sure, forty two, thirty seven, three right. Henson, one ninety four, fifty one, ninety. Mid thirty nine, sorry. Andrew Su, may go. Right in, District Seventy Four, these funds. District Seventy Eight, right in, one, District Seventy Six, order. Twenty, twenty four, it's right, it's right in. Supervisors, three votes for Perryman. Sheriff, two, one. One. And.
Top.
Yeah. Yeah. But. This. We could. I don't. Seven. The. You might. In. First. One. Right.
Yeah.
I.
No. Yeah.
Isn't it?
Okay. Surprising. Yeah. 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 Why? You. Depends. For.
Not. Ross. It. I'm not. I did all the. Good. That's. I don't know. If you don't jump on them. I don't. Cause that picture. But it's not. Yeah. That's. I would like to. Hold. Way back in. But when I saw. I got there. I was like. Yeah. I can't.
Form. So I need. I did. I probably. Yeah.
We got. Yes.
But. We think.
We have to sign all.
In a fight. Right one.
Yeah. Actually. Those two.
I'm just asking.
How. Yeah.
Nice. Okay. I know. Okay. I don't know. But. I think. We have.
Yeah. Wish. Uh. Money. Things. Yeah.
She heard. Say so. Y'all. So. Should I sign?
Um.
Now. Lots. And writer.
Here.
Actually. Actually. About my. And all too. But the whole.
Term.
Together. I.
We're. Yeah. Kind of.
Or like. In.
Same. Steve.
Yeah.
My.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pretty. Well. You think. Think of that for that. So.
That.
Jesus. I mean. I'm just.
You're okay.
Just jacking off on talking. Yes.
Okay. Hey. Yeah.
It's. The one on six.
Okay. Six.
There's.
Two. Both.
Years. Yeah.
The. Line is. Oh. Kind of going around. Yo.
Oh.
Oh. Okay. Who I.
Like.
Like. Yeah.
But. You. For. People.
I like them.
It.
No.
No. Yeah.
It's a dream.
Yeah. I wore those. I go on. I pick them up.
And then. Once.
As much.
That's. Which is.
Yeah. What's my car? So. Yeah.
Those.